We will call the meeting to order. Clerk, call the roll please.
Danko? Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Shire?
Here.
Mayor Bedi.
Here.
I'm still not used to that new order.
Are there any changes to the agenda? We will open the floor for public comment. If you have a comment for council, please come to the podium, state your name, and we have a three-minute timeline.
Alright, start.
I'll let you know when you get thirty seconds left, okay?
Is there any way I can get twenty extra seconds?
Yeah.
Alright, so I come here tonight to talk about the Bex development deal before you guys tonight. And just so you know, I'm not here to question anyone's integrity, your dedication to Streeter. I know most of you, Mayor Bedi, Councilman Shire, Mr. Reed, city staff. You know, I don't know you, Mr. Gary, but I've only heard good things. So, you know, I believe to the core of me, everybody here, you know, wants to see the Bex in Streeter, that's not a question. What I have a question tonight is the vision behind the Bex decision. You're being asked to approve development and a tax incentive package that's forever going to change Streeter. The proposed Bex gas station is not another corner store, it's a large-scale project in a fine location, inside of our park and part of our downtown. And yet, I have not heard, nor has anyone in Streeter that I'm aware of, heard how this fits into the long-term vision for this community. Now, our very own comprehensive and downtown strategic plans, both developed with public input, taxpayer investment, that both Mayor Bedi and I were part of as city council members at the time. Call for building up the downtown with strengths, preserving historic character, encouraging mixed-use development, enhancing pedestrian-friendly connections. So I gotta ask how this project, with its demolition of historic structures, single-use, car-oriented design, how does that advance these goals? If the answer is that it doesn't, then we deserve to know why those adopted plans are not being followed. Economic research and real-world experience in towns like ours show that large, subsidy-driven developments like this often fail to deliver the prosperity that they promised. They tend to replace property that could generate diverse, long-term tax revenue with a single-use facility whose peak value is reached on the day the ribbon's cut and fades from there. Deals like this erase older, historically valuable structures that anchor surrounding businesses and said bring its own model that sends much of its own profit out of town. In the long run, this is not how we build wealth, this is how we trade away. Older, smaller, mixed-use buildings consistently produce more revenue per acre per acre and more economic spillover than larger, single-use developments. By clearing this block and subsidizing its replacement, we're risking our inheritance for a short-term, low-yield return. History teaches us that places are made, great places are made, not by expedient choice, by the enduring one. Gas stations come and go, tax incentives vanish. The fabric of our downtown, the character, its heritage, the ability to draw people downtown, once that's torn, we cannot easily mend that. So I have to ask you, not in opposition, but earnestly, to pause and articulate to all of us clearly and publicly why this deal in this location with this level of public subsidy is the best choice for people of Streeter. Not just the people of today, but the people of future generations. You guys are stewards of more than bricks and asphalt. You carry the legacy of the people who built the city from prairie, coal, and glass. You carry responsibility guided toward a future that will stand the test of time. You have the power to use these incentives to make this development happen. And you have the power to use those same incentives to create a Streeter that we truly want, a Streeter that we're proud of, and a Streeter that we deserve. Thank you.
Perfect. Please. Any further public comments? I will mention page seventeen of the Downtown redevelopment plan calls that block auto-oriented commercial. So it's in the plan as such. As well as the central industrial area, also highlighted. Like any further public comment? We'll go to action items. Item one, resolution 202530, awarding a demolition contract to collector excavating in Sec. Illinois for properties at 525 Montgomery Street, 511 South Millennium Street, and 101 Riverside Avenue in conjunction with the 2025 demo project in the city of Streeter, county of LaSalle and Livingston. Make it a motion and a second.
So moved.
So.
Any motion by Mr. Reed? Is it ten for the second? Yes, okay. And ten here is the second. And discussion.
Thank you. So yeah, on August first, we had a bid opening for these three properties. Received five bids, the lowest being collector excavating, who hasn't been here before, but checked in with them, checked the references, and appeared to be able to do the job, they won't get paid until they do, so. So the three houses and just to, so I know we got, a couple of weeks ago, you guys did the extension of the Safe or the Strong Communities Grant for forty-two thousand. Without that grant, we wouldn't be able to do all three of these, so it is working out well, so. Recommend approval and we had to change this meeting to the night just for expediency to try to get it down by the end of the month. So that's why it's here tonight for approval, if you do, then we'll get going.
That was my next question.
Yeah.
Where's the timeline?
So yeah, because of the legal side of things, we're getting close to it, so we got to have it down. If you approve tonight, they'll be here in a short order.
They're gonna move quick.
Yes.
Do we need further questions?
Thanks.
If no further questions, clerk color roll please. Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Shire?
Aye.
Mayor Bedi?
Aye.
We'll go to the consent agenda. Items. A, Park Presbyterian Church, fourth party. And item B, where Rotary landscaping at Little Park. Make it a motion and second please.
Sorry.
Okay. Mr. Gary with the motion and Mr. Shire with the second. Any discussion? Okay, clerk color roll please.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Shire?
Aye.
Mayor Bedi?
Aye.
We'll go to discussion items. Item one is tip discussion on Bex oil.
I'll start and Jeremy can step in. The agreement tonight is a draft development agreement with Bex oil. You know, familiar with the property that they have acquired. There's been a series of conversations with them and the agreement tonight represents their demand in going to proceed with the project. The statute that we're operating under provides for the potential reimbursement of eligible expenses. And associated with this project, that they've identified, two million five hundred seventy thousand dollars that are eligible for reimbursement. The city would not be upfronting any money. The reimbursement would be made by taking the taxes that they pay and then after the city receives those monies from the county, then paying the payments to the company and repaying five percent of the actual dollars received, up to the two point five seven million dollars.
And a new one, I think a couple line changes changed?
Yeah, they've been one back and forth with it. That's the one clause where it's all, that's the project that's been developed, but.
The line changes that you talked about were basically, in this newest draft, there was language missed about act of God. So it was, it was in one spot, it was altered, the second spot wasn't. So it basically played out the default section. Bex attorney wanted it clarified that act of God wouldn't be a default. If they took more than ninety days to rebuild, if it was hit by tornado, it wouldn't be a default. So that was something that their attorney wanted, that if they're progressing towards re-establishing the business, if it was hit by tornado, ninety days doesn't put them in default, if it takes six months to rebuild. So that was the one spot, and the other was about repayment of, in the event of a default, repayment of subsidies paid to that point. And then I just, you guys have it there, but I guess just a couple things. Dave just said, yeah, that this is, an offer was made to Bex of a different agreement, and they came back and said, this is the deal to proceed. So this is not twice in front of you, that's why the, our TIF attorney worked to get the agreement to put together for you. Two point five seven is, is the maximum rebate they would receive if they hit their projections. They're proposing that the overall, overall investment will be eleven million dollars. So in between pumps and outfitting the facility and everything, they're, they're gonna invest eleven million dollars in Streeter, including TIF and non-TIF eligible costs. So two point five is what they're requesting. Reimbursement will be eighty-five percent, because there's a lot of that, it's only based on what they generate. So the artifician consultant, working with the tax assessor for LaSalle County, is estimated that it will generate about a hundred fifty thousand dollars in taxes. And if you look at some of the larger gas sites in LaSalle County, that's, that number is, is accurate. So it will only, no money from anyone else's taxes, that's, we talked about it at the, at the TIF hearing, it's only their money. So when they, they will get eighty-five percent reimbursement until they hit that two point five seven number over the life of the TIF. As projected, if their assessment is that a hundred fifty thousand dollar range, there'll be about four to five years at the end of the TIF, the last seventeen, eighteen, from year seventeen to eighteen till year twenty-three, where they will have already been repaid, which has happened in all of our previous TIFs, like bill wash and all those things. So that money then will just be available for city's use for TIF eligible expenses, infrastructure, facade grants, all those things. So eighty-five percent of their, of theirs goes back to them, which leaves the fifteen percent of twenty-two five hundred would be available for the city's use for facade grants, infrastructure, all those things annually until they're paid back. David said it's pay-as-you-go, so if, you know, if their taxes don't come in, they don't get reimbursed. So there's no money upfront. The biggest thing that, that was in the agreement is, is a new amenity in Streeter is a commercial car wash. So they, the agreement is null and void if they do not put in a commercial, like you see in Peru and Ottawa, one of those large-scale drive-through car washes. If that doesn't go in, the agreement does not, they, they get no rebate. So, and they're committing to do that. The next part about the default here, that ninety-day, got changed from sixty to ninety days, but that's, that's in there. The current cost of demolition of the structure on the site is over a million dollars. So, you know, of their two point five seven ask, a million dollars is just to get it down to a local site. Oh yeah, and then the last point, and then by, you know, transmittal was agreement states that the cost that we pay, economic development group are her client and this team to create the TIF, so we had all those meetings, we had all the mailings, those costs are paid first, and then Bex proceeds or reimbursement after that. So the city will be reimbursed for those fees.
I think the final thing for council to take into account is that this property has been sitting potentially for fifty years. And it has experienced significant annualism. It's in a pretty poor physical condition. And the development falls up to forty-five, and it will address some of the issues that deal with the buildings. Obviously, by removing the buildings, it takes care of these nuisances. But, you know, the alternative would be some angel investor wanting to put millions in and restore your own church. But no one has come forward making a proposal to do that. And other than the Chinese group, some years ago, they made a significant investment in properties. And the properties have really, Streeter, because of the lack of oversight and use, it's really, it's in bad condition.
Jeremy, I have another question for you. They're gonna put in a car wash, any idea of how much income that'll create for the sewage treatment plant? Car washes are high uses of water, and so that's all incremental income also.
Is, we haven't, we don't have a firm number on it, it's all gonna depend on usage, of course. But car wash is one of the higher rates that we charge in our sewer, and it will help, and then it was in my, the, the amount that we're, will help offset the loss of bonus.
I mentioned just this property, I had two people approach about the same church. One wanted to make it a wedding venue. Once they got the cost to tear down the steeple, it became cost prohibitive to move forward. The second person wanted to put in, keep the machines. And again, when they got the cost to repair and put the building back into usable, it was not, not something that they were going to, to put the money into. My concern is this people. It's been two thousand ten, the diocese has a report, and in two thousand ten, it was one point two million to repair and keep the church open. So it's probably double the way cost of burn-up since then, just to put that in. So as much as I would love to see it just saved, I think we're probably past the point on that one. Last match was September of two thousand ten, so it's been almost fifteen years since it was really considered very usable when people were in there.
Has anybody done a structural evaluation of the church building?
I think that two thousand ten.
I mean, I think in the last year or two.
I, I've, I've been in it, about, I was in it a year ago, I climbed to the top of the steeple, it has not improved since the two thousand ten report. So, and I went through it with the, with the developer that was looking at the wedding venue, and it was also gonna be a concert hall, is what they looked at, and when we walked through it, the plaster on the ceilings is all starting to come down, so that's all gonna have to be repaired if you were to try to occupy that space. So the weather is taking hold.
I'd love nothing more than to see something else done with that property besides a gas station. But I think at this point, we've gotten to a spot where it's not viable unless we find someone that has a, and a spunk of cash available to them. And if they are coming to do that, now would be the time.
I will mention that block, there was Pickworth Philip sixty-six, Glenn Beckman Motors, the old mill restaurant, Howard's gas station, Gold's Glen gas station. Through the years, it's been, it's been on the front. But we're discussing, so it's not, I mean, that was back in nineteen thirty-three, into the seventies, I believe.
It'll be painful to see it come down, if it happens. Not quite to that point yet, if it happens, but.
Again.
Sometimes there's some tough decisions that need to be made.
In July of two thousand, I was on the council when Frank's jewelry store collapsed. Fell into Main Street, crushed a couple cars on Monroe Street. And let me tell you, that, that was a nightmare of a couple of weeks dealing with that. I'd hate to go through that again. I'm afraid that'll happen if we don't do something with that church. Either get it, find somebody committed to putting some money into it or taking it down, but it's going to collapse.
Losing that beautiful.
Be on the council when that happens.
Losing that beautiful building is one thing, the TIF is kind of a separate thing that. Can't, sort of goes hand in hand with it, but is there, is there a chance that this maximum projected cost is going to come in lower?
Well, I have to document it.
No, they have to document, every penny they spend has to be documented.
Right, obviously, that's the maximum. Are, are we confident that it's gonna be shaved down to, you know, every, every dollar helps?
Well, I, I think the, the company would be concerned about having to have to spend money if they, they're.
Oh, absolutely, right, yeah.
Right, because otherwise, you're waiting years, interest-free, right? For that money to come back.
Do we think that there's a possibility that a quarter of a million dollars will be knocked off of that?
With the cost of construction, I don't think so, but it would be nice, I mean, everything, we're, we're seeing increases over the past three years.
This is just the maximum, a lot.
Yes.
Are they, and every, every year, for them, the entertainment bill?
They have to document the.
All of the expenses that they're relying on, you have to document this, and it's true with any of our TIF deals.
Well, I'm surprised they're only asking for two point five million out of eleven million dollar investment, because from what I've seen, their more recent builds, they've been asking a lot more percentage-wise from the different communities, so. I don't know if you've had any information on that, Dave?
Well, I, I think it comes down to eligible costs. If they had five million dollars worth of eligible expenses, I, I wouldn't be surprised if they did that.
They would have asked for that, yeah.
And they're also, since it's pay-as-you-go, they're gonna be able to supply the amount of taxes that they're gonna be paying every time. Over the twenty-three-year life of the district, so it would be a maximum amount of money that wouldn't be valid, even if they had expenses that were larger than that amount.
I just, I think all of us agree with your sentiment, Mr. Thaylon. I think we do, I don't think we all are out there just wanting to try to, what can we get rid of? It's a beautiful building, and we have our gorgeous park right there, and I, I get it. But at this point, I'm not sure if there's anything else that is going to be appropriate for what we have to deal with.
I think, I mean, the first meeting I had with, with them, I mentioned the park being right there and asked, can you do extra landscaping or something on that corner, because I don't want it to be a shock. And they were, they were agreeable to that, so it's not out of their.
Do we have ways of holding it tight?
The, the site plan will have to come back for review by the play commission and the city council.
Anything further on that? On the TIF discussion? And will this be next week, next Wednesday, or possibly more changes?
Well, I think we're ready to move on.
If it's the consensus of the council, then yes.
If this gets approved next week, what's the timeline we're looking at?
He said demolition this winter. This winter demolition.
Item two, go to, discussion two, our K ordinance.
I'm sorry, I don't have a draft for the council.
That's okay. We had discussed this at our last meeting, as far as getting.
Amending the fees down to twenty-five dollars and, you know, like, really.
Eliminating, eliminating the cap or changing it with the eight machines?
From eight to fifteen, we discussed that part.
Because at eight, at eight, you cannot get a lawyer license.
Right. I had no limit in the Volleyum Alley.
Do you agree with that?
It's because I thought, we did discuss that, but I thought how we land in was no limit.
If it's a Volleyum Alley, yeah.
So my apologies for having this stuff for tonight, we'll try and get it for next Wednesday.
Okay.
And if there's that next Wednesday, pounds, whatever, hopefully next Wednesday.
No, my name is Mr. Shire. Okay. Item three is the America two fifty celebration. So, let me bring up my notes off the phone. So through July, was July fourth next year, is the celebration of America's two hundred fiftieth. There's a state and a federal organization told in America two fifty, that organ, this Illinois also has a two fifty. At the state level, they're doing a time capsule, if there's anything we wanna send or apply to be a part of it. IML also has some ordinance that we can pass in support of celebrating the two hundred fiftieth. And, you know, you had discussed, part of a couple ideas in our last meeting, but just wanted to kick off the discussing what we can do to.
Well, we can celebrate all year long, as we are in our two hundred and fiftieth year.
Yes.
So it culminates on July, so.
They have some rolling advice that we could.
I'm missing the play check. So we can, so as council, we can pledge to become America's, a member of the America two fifty. There is a link at the Illinois website, that's ILtwofifty.org. So you can fill out the form, you get a community toolkit, resolution on how to get involved. You can do a special event, you can do a project to commemorate. So it's, we, then we don't have to make the decision today, but.
Thinking.
Think of what that would be. You know, do we wanna do similar to our Suesby Centennial, where we pulled the different organizations to do events together and try to put a twist on what we're doing, maybe add a couple of things.
At the federal level, there is a, I have a message with Dave about this, just real briefly. They have a, I think it's like a Winnebago or Airstream or something like that. They have set up, it's gonna travel around the country, and they are going to collect voices of America, American story. And I think they're all going to be cataloged and archived and on a display at the Library Academy, or National Museum, or something like that. What if we, could we do something like that at our level? Try to collect two hundred fifty.
Local stories.
Local stories, yes, and it doesn't need to be about America or Streeter necessarily, just two hundred fifty. And when I say local, you know, I have to give someone in Peru to partake, or outside of our community. Could we come up with a way to written or spoken word, and then, great, now you have it, what do you do with it now? We have a lovely little museum in our town that we would possibly come up with a display. I'm sure that there's a certain cost that comes with that, it wouldn't be free, if you could sponsor a story for ten dollars. You know, this is all just an idea I had going up here, but I thought I would put it out there.
I mean, there's, we can do banners.
Sure.
Do, part of me thought of, could we try to do something with the canteen memorial?
Or, yeah.
More memorial that needs a little bit of work, restore one of those.
Yeah, some pretty good.
Canteen music.
The canteen that we do.
We do have some pretty good volunteerism in town, that's for sure.
And Tim just got volunteered.
I was looking at EJ.
Oh. I was talking earlier, look at it, you're younger.
EJ and Drake just got off of the Fourth of July, so they'll take a break.
They need to take a breather for a week or so.
Speaking of fundraising, EJ? Speaking of fundraising, EJ?
Liberty Dollar.
He was fundraising yesterday, weren't you?
Yeah. One of these.
So we'll put, so first discussion, we'll put in, continue thinking of ideas for that one, but.
And I'll talk to the Historical Society Board to see how they would run the help. Or put the city on there with something.
Anything more on America 250 for today?
I was gonna, I brought up about the Centennial Parade.
Oh, yeah.
In 1968, how huge that was. I was gonna twist in, I was on, he's not here. Remind us, he's 4th of July, great day. Darn good attitude.
I also saw him, was it 1976? They did that fireworks show outside dining with the 200. So, different ideas. Okay, item four, discussion on Logan's Oasis. I have. I have other show lists. This was the original layout.
Is that the original?
Was I down?
Yes.
This is the new current.
These are cool.
Are these the old versions?
And that one?
Pass up.
One of each. So the new layout, like everything, when the project was originally quoted to when the funds were raised, some of the prices increased. So the core of it is here, that stayed the same. The infinity bowls went down to one. This was removed, the zip track, the seesaw was removed. And this raccoon spring rider. So this is the new layout. And this is the original. So five pieces, four pieces of equipment were removed.
Well, if this is no longer significant, I really looking at, just be looking at.
Because my question is to council, for $30,000 approximately, you can put all that back in if council wanted to put money into it. So just.
So at this point, we're not committed to anything?
At this point, we're committed to that, the smaller sheet. That is what is.
I mean financially.
On order. Financially, we are going to do install and then the surface. Probably a sidewalk up to it. So. And I think we may want to get that official quote. This is the port in place surfacing, which I, they want a $171,000 to do port in place.
I'm sorry.
The rubber. So if you wanted to make this one of those port in place rubber surfaces, through the company that provides the playground equipment, it's 171,000 for just a surface.
What is the plan currently for it?
If we do, if we have our people training to use a different company, the materials are 38.
Yeah, I think the idea is we're going to work for getting the port in place with them outside of the.
Outside. I'm sure they're going to do a markup because they're, they're probably outsourcing it and they're increasing the cost. So.
Is that what the plan is right now? Does the port in place or is the plan currently for?
The plan was port in.
The plan for.
Because it's an inclusive playground, so if you're having wheelchair, so trying to push through molds, it would be, the rubber surface would be a bit easier.
I gotta ask this, does port in place rubber vandalize easily? Sorry, I didn't ask that.
That's a good question.
I don't think so. I, I know that the other rubber that we use at Twister Hill Park is, we're all over the park.
But it's loose.
Right. So I would not recommend that. This area is also subjected to occasional flooding. And so you don't want anything that could wash away. And it should have required the kind of maintenance that any human poses for the wood chips, sand and pad. So I think the alternatives, the port in place would probably require more maintenance. We just don't have any experience here, here with that painted surface. But we could do some research on that. But I think the current thinking is that would be the preference for all sorts of reasons. And it's probably the more costly of the options available. But if we're going to build this playground, let's do it right and put in now everything we want because it will be even more costly later to add pieces.
And if we added later, you're going to have a scene. There's no guarantee that that's going to adhere properly. So that's part of.
I agree.
I just was at the state, Iowa State Fair and they have a new playground with port in place. And it even goes down a hill with that surface, but it's brand new, so I don't know how it's going to wear.
Yeah.
Just pretty interested to see it next year, but it, yeah. It is nice.
Do you think it'd be repairable?
Well, it's insurable, to the extent that it wouldn't be damaged or often probably get it fixed.
It is repairable, you can cut sections out and re-put.
Yeah. Thanks.
But I think the first, one of the questions is, would the council at least want to consider spending $30,000 to get all of the equipment that was originally issued out there? Since we didn't make any contributions to the underlying fundraising, knowing that we would probably be held responsible for things.
Correct.
We're doing a lot of in.
Right.
But on the build side, that's going to be our equipment that we're investing in. And we really haven't made a significant investment in playgrounds quite a while. We did replace the playground, the bathroom floor, so it's coming through the turrets.
Means the zip.
And I was there today.
Zip track looks pretty cool.
How was it?
Playground equipment's nice.
Intact, no?
It's intact still, but very nice, she really enjoyed it.
It was a very nice park.
I have some issues with the benches that are down there, that the benches. We put them in 1995, I believe. I helped, I remember helping building those. And they haven't been updated, repainted. One whole corner, one of the benches has rotted away. And just two by eights or two by six boards, it'd take about 10 minutes to replace. The playground equipment and the surface, it's very nice. It's a nice park.
It is. It's donated in 1940 summer to the city. Oh, you can look at, there's a part numbers on the website, so you can see, if you go on their website, see what they look like, to get a better idea of those, that equipment. See the ones they, zip line. Again, no decision tonight, but think about those. Okay, any?
So the question before us is.
The question, do we want to?
Is this worth 30,000 more to us than this? That's the question.
Is that we want to add? A little bigger.
Cause I'm looking at this total cost of the area.
Yes, but that includes the 171 for people.
Yeah.
Take that out. That'll be a little, make a little better this, we'll get.
Yeah, cause she's right at her goal, isn't she? Or above it with that last branch she just got.
There. And that's, that's ready to go with the funds raised today. So it's just these four pieces of equipment. As in the infinity bowl, there were two on this, this original. And one was taken out. That's exactly what it sounds like. It's a bowl that spins.
It's a bowl that never ends.
Goes to infinity.
Kind of like a Chinese buffet, the bowl bottom was full.
I follow.
This is a zip track.
What is that?
This is a track.
Oh, this.
The one.
Those are pretty cool.
So if we make this decision and donation, well, make the decision either way, they're ready to start construction.
We will need to bid out the construction.
For it. And there'll be other costs, you know, we think, or you could do the, the man for less than this company's. Till we give bids for that port in place.
But it's hard to get specs and everything, but maybe, maybe it's not Jeremy, but if we were to pull out or do a bid on the installation, we would want to know.
Yes.
What we're installing.
I, I, I think, correct me, cause I wasn't in the last meeting, but I think the goal is to have it ready for spring 2026. So there'll be some items coming back to council for purchase of things in the coming months. If the equipment's on order and it's going to be being delivered, we'll put it in, I think as it comes in. But the plan is being developed that's going to come to council. I think that's the best way to, but having it open for play in spring 2026.
Some more to come on that one. Look at what the items are and we'll go through there. Remote participation for meetings, number of discussion five. Okay, so the Open Meetings Act allows for remote participation, but we have to adopt our own rules allowing that to happen. And it can't happen for just any reason. It has to be for certain reasons alone by law. One is a person could not attend due to personal illness or disability. So if you were home with a flu but felt up to participate in a meeting, you could participate. Cannot attend because of employment purpose or business of the city. So if you had to go out of town for your job or had to go out of town on business of the city, you could participate remotely. You could not attend because of a family or other emergency. And more recently, it was, the Open Meetings Act was amended if your attendance was prevented due to unexpected childcare obligations. So we have to first have a quorum present, so we can't create a quorum by remote participation. And the people present need to vote to allow absent that move to participate with that. Once that motion, or if that motion is passed, I'd actually seen it denied. You can tell that was not a healthy board. Then the remote member fully participates and they can vote, they can make motions, they can involve the discussions. If you were to go into executive session, they could fully participate in the executive session. So I, I recommend it's something that we get done and.
Have in place.
Have in place. Any further questions on discussion five? We'll go to item six, which is pickleball courts. So we apply for a grant through ARK and we're max elected to do a full court. So now what we do? We'll look for another grant, find funding, put in the budget for next year.
Remind us what the approximate cost would be for two courts.
$30,000 per court, no matter how young, orientation.
So it's going to be 60?
60. There was, I think it'll be on the next park board meeting, I will say, Nora Sedlock, a member of the park board, had come up with an idea and I think they're going to discuss it to that level, but I'll, I'll pre-warn you is, she had an idea of putting one behind, behind the incubator, behind the old armory, to the southwest, the southwest corner of the parking lot, behind, used, behind the gated area. There's area there to basically install it, the fencing is up, you don't have to put up one side of fencing. It's, the base is prepared and we just have to basically pour the court and put in the, so it moves it up from Mariner, like up on top of the retaining wall. And it, I, from a pure.
So would that reduce the cost?
Yes.
We're already using.
Yes, because you, because the base is there and I said, so yeah, the cost would come down, the fencing would come down. So from a just straight, can it be done perspective, I told her yes, but I don't know if that's the location that everyone would want it. So if you go over there, you'll, you'll see it. It's where the dumpster is at now, the dumpster would be moved to the east side of the building and all those things, but there is space there that will fit a pickleball, a regular pickleball court. And then you'd be up on top, her plan was the restrooms are available then at the, at the armory, you just walk over there, there's parking available at Mariner Park or at the armory. So I think that might come back to you if the park board elects to do so.
We'd probably need to go to the incubator court as well, if that were.
Yeah.
The ultimate request.
I've been asking around, I play pickleball three times a week out of Hawaii. And a, a group from our group went over to Winona this weekend to play at a tournament. They've got two courts. And they said over 500 people participated. There weren't 500 teams, a lot of them were on, you know, singles, doubles, mixed up, they played on several. But they had 500 people in Winona and all they did was pretty much took an unused tennis court, repainted it, put some new fencing around it. And I was surprised that Winona had pickleball courts. Oh, Manunk has pickleball courts, Ransom has pickleball courts. Everybody but Streeter has pickleball courts. When I, when I think about, we accept 30, 40, up to $50,000 a year cost of having a golf course, and of course, we just approved 30,000, up to 30,000 for a new greens cover because that's part of the cost of maintaining. Yet we're always hesitant to do something new that everybody else is not hesitant. So I've come full circle on this, I'm all on board now. So that's where I'm at.
I, it could be put out to bid, I can draw up the plans, if you guys say to go, we had the plans at Mariner, we can do a bid and present it to council for yet this year or put it as part of next year's budget.
At this point, I'd say let's wait and see what Parks Board does, because.
Agreed.
Well, I think they're willing for us to.
Why have you spend all that time with them saying, no, we don't want anything to do with the armory, we want, and then, yeah. But I'm very open to it.
And that's. Our Ozley from the bank again?
Yeah, so.
Is there other parks?
We, we can do it, Ozley agreed at this fault, I mean, and.
If you want, try it.
Definitely try it. If I spend our money, we can spend somebody else's. And every politician's thought.
Say it.
Pressed it.
So Parks Board is tomorrow night, we get feedback from them, but they're, they had asked me what council's, what are we gonna, what's council gonna do now that we didn't get that grant, so. At least think about it. Okay, next, city official comments.
I have something to start off with.
Yes.
We got a response from the Illinois Department of Transportation. Thank you for providing a copy of resolution 2025-27. The department appreciates the city of Streeter's desire for safe roadways, especially at the intersection of Illinois 18th and East 15th Road in ways outcoming. Staff, I got District 3 officers are currently reviewing crash data for this intersection and will perform a site visit. The information learned from these reviews will be used to determine if safety improvements are warranted and what improvements could be effective. Thank you for sharing your concerns about highway safety. If you have further questions, please contact Mike Short, District 3, program of transportation.
At least we got the attention. We can't change whatever they decide, but we do what we could.
Second announcement I have, I've got two, David and Daniel are both registered for Iowa. So anybody else is interested, please see the registration from that hotel.
I'm, I'm working on that, but I won't meet him up for, make it about this, a day trip.
Okay, well, just let me know and I'll be here with registration.
It's like Operation Sidetrack for me, I keep on.
And the other thing I wanted to mention, I put in each of your mailboxes, there's gonna be another Mayor's Association Dinner, Thursday, August 21st. It's 22.
Valentinos.
Valentinos, yeah. So, but I do need your RSVP by.
30.
Because it's August 21st. So, that August 21st.
Are you going to do it?
I just looked at that today and I have two meetings already that night, so I'll have to, either move things around or. Just schedule right.
I'm gonna consider it.
Thank you.
I'm gonna jump in next if you don't mind. Two things I wanted to bring up, I want to say thank you to President of Rotary Club, Greg Tolles, for the work that they're doing at Pearl Park, freshening up that landscaping, very much appreciated. And I also want to just take a minute and say thank you to EJ and Drake Flanagan for their undying support to Streeter Fest and the work that you do, salable liberty dollars, does not go unnoticed. Well, thank you.
Well, that was, that was on my list also. But since you did it, I want to thank you. On August 30th, 11:00 AM, I'm gonna be giving a talk at the Streeter Public Library on the most famous man from Streeter that nobody's ever heard of, his name's John Williams. At the turn of the 20th century, he was a household name nationwide. He put Streeter on the map, he was more famous than Colonel Plow. But he's been kind of lost in history, he was a labor leader, opened up the first union in Illinois, created the United Mine Workers Union, that is still the third largest union in the world today. He wrote the, I can't think of the name of the act that he wrote, the Workman's Compensation Act. He wrote that in the basement of the library at Streeter's, so. Contributed a lot, and I'm gonna be giving a talk on him, it's Labor Day weekend, they asked me to talk about, do a talk on labor and he's the, he's the labor guy. I always said if we have a statue to Reuben Soderstrom, we should have a monument to John Williams. If we were looking for John Williams, we wouldn't have had a Reuben Soderstrom. And then I also want to pitch Pluto Fest, I think this is our last meeting before Pluto Fest, September 13th, up at the City Park. It's being hosted in conjunction with the Food Truck Festival. And it's being sponsored by Hardscrabble Lions Club, we've got bands all day, obviously we have food trucks, we have vendors. What's that? No, we don't. I have my checks far, I was gonna ask if I could come in in the morning and do that. So put that on your calendar, September 13th. That's all I got.
That's it. I'm glad, because they trumped all over the place, I was like, I spent, and Daniel for the awesome job that was Streeter Fest, is it was quite impressive to see the crowds and here's some of the bands and EJ and Greg. But, yeah, that's all I got. Yeah, quite a year.
The crowd were humble. And background, there's little issues. They were malhabited. So I think, and Police Department, Fire Department's are there, and Public Works, Public Works are up there, so doing a lot of work too, so. My, I went to it.
People were pressed to help set up this shirt, I think it worked really, really well.
It was nice to have all the law enforcement there.
Yes.
Some of our partners at South County Livings and County and Illinois State Police. So, thanks them for coming in and supporting the festival as well. A couple events, August 23rd is the Overdose Memorial Walk at the City Park. And then the 30th is Cruise Night and Car Show, that will be on Meeting Street this year. So just instead of the park, the car show will be on Meeting, so that's a little different than years past. But that will be here before we know it. And Labor Day Parade, I'm in the chamber, I see Derek here, so sure to sign up to be a part of that as well, to be part of it. Any other comments?
Frank's got something.
I don't know if this is the right time to say this or not, but we have our little retail store at the South Town Mall further, at North Point, sorry, North Point. And we were very excited this year, we had people from Gibson City, we had people from Iowa, we had people from way down, well over there at Coal City, a diamond, Joliet. We just had all kinds of people coming in from farther away than what we, we thought we would draw. And the nice thing was they signed up in our computer system, so that means they're probably gonna come back. So it's very important to the retail people too, that we continue to bring that, different folks in from different areas.
We had, and I, people messaging saying I'm driving in from four hours away to see this or this performer or that, so it brings a crowd, definitely. There were metrics, one of the analytics companies sent us some samples from last year. I'd be interested to see the same numbers this year with the weather we had. But the, it went through like the percentage of retail increased. I think on a, going off memory, an average day, we have 3,000 out of town visitors. And on last year's Streeter Fest weekend, we had averaged 11,000 a day from out of town coming in. So, quite an impact on, on that one. All right, if there are no further comments, I will request a motion in second to a term.
So.
Second. It's God, it's him.
Dinko? Eric? Reed? Shire?
Aye.
Every night.
Aye.